Okay, Record of Attendance. Linda, you're good. Approval of agenda, additions or deletions. So I have some additions. We're going to put them under 12. So 12A, intermunicipal expectations. 12B will be smart city. 12C will be joint councils, and 12D, water write-offs. Do we have any more additions?
Can I, Deputy?
Thank you, your worship. And I don't know if it was put on, but I'd like to take it off the agenda. It's gone?
I did take it off.
Thank you.
Yep, we're good. Okay, any more additions or deletions? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions, your worship.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Okay. Approval of minutes. We're at Town Council Regular Meeting, November 16th.
So, uh, so moved?
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Town Council Special Meeting, November 16th.
So moved?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the Whole, November 23rd.
So moved?
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. The Dootown Council Special, November 30th. Okay.
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, folks. Okay, so we have, welcome Erica. Erica's with the Western REN, and she has a presentation on land and asset database. Welcome.
Thank you. Is this on?
Yeah, make sure you pull it close so we can all...
I get to be a rock star, right?
You're on EastLink, so it's good that folks can hear.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, council, for allowing me to come forward and give this presentation. Again, my name is Erica Ralston. I'm with the Western Regional Enterprise Network, the regional economic development organization for the region, from Barrington all the way around to Digby. So from Clyde River to Bear River is our region. And today, I'm going to give you a bit of a presentation, just a short one. I'm going to start with the website, is what I'm going to start with, just because I think that probably some of you are not familiar with our website and what you can expect to find on there. And that's just going to lead us into the land and asset database, which is the main project that I'm here to talk to you about tonight. So you can all see the screen, right? Okay. So across the top, there's events, blog, about, contact. Pretty straightforward stuff there. Events, we post. If NSBI is having a trade mission, we put it on there. If a COA or BDC are doing some business training development that's available to local businesses, we put it up there. So anything that's activities, events, or training sessions, and again, trade missions. The blog is an effort of ours to bring a little bit of reality, make it tangible, what we do. Our mandate, as I'm sure you're aware, is to guide and navigate regional economic development, which is a very high-level mandate and doesn't necessarily say a lot about what we actually do. So the blog puts a little bit of meat on those bones for you. About is just, it's basically our board, their terms, their bios, the board meeting agenda, or not agenda, pardon me, but schedule of meetings, if you ever need to see that, and as well as staff and all the bios. And then contacts is pretty straightforward. So the rest of this is the meat of what I want to get into with you. Invest, Live, Grow, Get Connected, Knowledge Suite in our communities are the pages that we've got up here. I'm going to start with Live and then end up at Invest. So the Live one is, I just want to reiterate that everything that comes out of the Western Regional Enterprise Network has a regional focus. So when we're talking about living in the Western region, we mean anywhere from Clyde River to Bear River. So this is all just the high-level stuff about what we love about living here, places to go to school, opportunities in the region. Grow is the page where we host two of our three service delivery efforts. So at the top of that, you'll see the Business Now, which if you're familiar with the Business Retention and Expansion Program, it's run by our Victoria Brooks. She will give actual, like she meets with people in their offices to talk about their business. It's about an inch deep, but a mile wide, this overview. So it's a good way to help find any red flags if a business is experiencing any trouble. If they want to expand, she can refer them to resources to help them with that. The next link down is actually those business resources. So for people who, business people who just want to get into the resources themselves, they don't want to have to go through a referral organization or anything, we've listed it all there just as a resource for local businesses. And then at the very bottom is the Atlantic Immigration Pilot Project. This is a two-year pilot, and we have, Gino Thibault is his name, and he's actually going to be asking to make a presentation to you as well. He's going to be with us for two years, and his job is to help get more Western regional employers designated under the Atlantic Immigration Pilot Project. This is an employer-driven effort. This is, it's aiming at getting a permanent, living here workforce to move in. So it's not like a temporary foreign workers' program. It's quite different from that. And it does aim to actually fill labor shortages and improve immigration into the region. So I'm not going to spend much time on those, because Gino will be telling you about that in the new year. Get Connected is the page where we talk about our connector program. Now, I believe that Brenda LaGrandre has already made a presentation to your council about that, so I don't need to go into much detail about that. You're familiar with it being a way to intentionally network skilled workforce with business communities, so that they can, you know, make use of the informal networks. So that when somebody says, "I've got this thing that needs doing. Does your brother-in-law still do that thing?" Some of these people can now get into that, right? They can start getting the word-of-mouth referrals for jobs. Our Knowledge Suite is where we host our data, basically. So there's some high-level data. There's a bit of a slideshow at the beginning with some regional data from our regional economic profile. We've got links to all of our previous newsletters. And then reports, we've got government industry reports, and we've also got, all of our Western REN reports are there. So if you ever want to see our strategic plan, our business plans, our annual reports, they're all in there for public access. Then finally, our communities. So you may recall the fast fact sheets is what I was calling them in office. They're mini-profile packages, where every one of our regional communities has a one-page, double-sided information, high-level, at a glance, this is what the town of Yarmouth wants people to know about coming here. We produce them in French and English. So on this page, down the left-hand column, you can actually download French or English versions of all of the fact sheets. And on the right-hand side, those links just go directly to your websites, all the member municipal websites.
Those fact sheets are really nice.
Yeah, we're really proud of them. And Barrington, of course, just came on in April, so theirs is done now as well and available for download. And I've got to bring everybody copies of that to tuck in with whatever packages you have left. I've also spoken with all of the EDOs to find out how those packages were used, if they were used, what did you like about them, and what would we need to change, if anything, for future updates on them. Because the data needs to be updated all the time, so we'll need to update those documents. So over on the Invest page, this is where the remainder of my few minutes here is going to focus. So this page does talk about, we've got some information about reasons to invest in the region, our economic profile, our labor market profile is on here. We've got some information about the traditional and emerging industries that are in the region. At the top, we've got the land and asset database. So I'm going to go there now. Investinwesternns.com is the name of it. First and foremost, I want to let you all know that this database is not targeting you. This is not for your information, although we are asking very much for your participation in making sure that it's accurate and up-to-date. This database is for investors or site selectors outside of the region who are looking for investment properties, who are looking for commercial or industrial properties in the region. Now, what makes this different from a regular real estate page, and I'll talk again about real estate in a moment, is that it doesn't just give the listings, it gives the context of the community. So if this were just a real estate listings page, it would pull open the, you know, the 30 commercial or industrial properties that are available within five miles of here, or whatever the number is. This also shows where Town Hall is, it shows where the restaurants are, it shows where the hotels are, it shows where the fire halls are, all of those kinds of things. So those are some of the context that investors want to know about. So I'm just going to take you to the map. It's pretty straightforward stuff. I could spend hours asking Natalie. She's had to sit through the training on this, I'll tell you right now. The background of this is not very exciting stuff, but the map itself is pretty cool. So I've just opened it up to the map page. There's no need to log in or anything. You can see it straight off the bat. Now, can you see all the, there's a green icon, and then there's black ones. The black ones demonstrate, right down here at Yarmouth, it's this black circle, it says 51 inside. What that means is there's 51 properties inside that circle. So if I click on it, it'll zoom in, and then I'll just keep zooming in until I get close enough to find one individually. So the green icons are properties for sale. Those load every single time you open the map. The other things I talked about need to be loaded up separately. So I'm going to move the cursor over to the right-hand side. First, I'm going to scroll down. So over here, we've got point assets on the left-hand side of the screen. And a point asset is all those things I listed earlier. It's businesses, it's attractions, it's emergency services, it's government services, it's any number of things. It's whatever makes our community interesting and appealing. So we can turn those on as well. I'm just, I'm not used to using this kind of mouse. I'm used to rolling, sorry. A little bit slow here. So I'm just zooming out again, so you'll get an idea when I turn on some of these point assets, the way it shows up. So I'm going to turn on accommodations. So we should see several of them pop up. The little purple icons are actual individual accommodations. And then again, the blue circle has a number inside, eight. So there's eight accommodations. So that would be hotels, bed and breakfast, motels, et cetera. Got an airport, if I can click on it. It'll come up. So if we were to go through and turn them all on, this map gets very busy in a big hurry, as you can well imagine. We've got a lot of assets in the region and a lot going on, so. But this is so that those site selectors can search specifically what they want. Now, they can do it this way, as I'm showing you, by looking at the map and zooming in and out. Or they can actually just do a separate search altogether. They can specifically say that I want to search the town of Yarmouth, and they just have to zoom, you know, scroll down and find the town, which I think is at the bottom, given alphabetical order. Oh, good heavens. Sorry about this. There we go. So the town of Yarmouth, you can say that we want to search commercial properties that I need. If an investor needs a certain acreage, they can say, "I need five acres." I need a building size of whatever it is they need, that they'll need internet, cell service, whether they need cable, what kind of power they need. And then at the bottom, you can say, "Okay, so show me," I'm going to say accommodations, and I'm going to say five kilometers. So if an investor said, "I need an office space that's within five kilometers of accommodations for when my CEO's come to visit my shop," so then I'm going to search everything that I can, and of course, it's going to tell me that there's nothing there. What? Okay, so I'm not sure why it's saying there's nothing there, because we can see that there is. I wonder if I just made a mistake there. Oh, oh, view results, search. Here we go. So then it'll come up with the listings specifically. Now, I told you that I was going to give you just a bit of information about the real estate piece of this, and I'm going to do that now. We are not realtors. The Western REN is not a real estate business. We don't want to get in the middle of real estate deals. We just want the commercial and industrial property to move in a way that benefits the region, to start generating some revenues. So when we click on a property, an individual property, now this one doesn't have a photograph, it's not a big deal. We've got information about the services, any additional details about it, sizes of it. Things like column spacing, how far apart are the columns? Can my forklift move its way around in there? Can my transport truck back up into it, if that's what they need? Then under contacts is where we put the realtor's information. So the idea here is not that we're trying to get ourselves in the middle of a real estate deal. That I do not want. It's not my bailiwick at all, and not the Western REN's. So the contact information does go directly to the realtors. So we're getting them on board as well with making sure that their information is updated and accurate. And they can all become contributors. They can get their own accounts. Natalie has an account she can go on, and I think, in fact, she did put this one in there. So that is four minutes more than I was meant to go.
So questions for Erica? Anyone? You're doing some great work, you know, and it's all stuff that had to be done to get us up and running, but we're up and running.
Yeah.
It is, it is. We're the first, so.
It is a lot of work, and this is a part of that investment readiness portion, right? Where we're out there trying, you know, we, as councils, as economic developers, NSBI with the province, are out there trying to attract investment into Nova Scotia. It is beholden upon us to be able to land those catches, right? They're out there baiting the hook. We need to be able to land it. And having the data available so you can respond, that's how you land those deals.
Erica, as a response to the...
Counselor Dennis?
That's all right.
That's okay.
We'll get you.
I was just wondering if the schools on there?
The schools, yes.
Okay.
Yep, all schools are on there, right up through post-secondary.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counselor Wood?
So the RENs has, it serves several municipal units. What, I don't know, six or seven?
Seven.
Seven. And not all, but most either share or have their own, what do we call them?
Economic Development Officer.
Economic Development Officer.
That's right.
How does the REN itself deal with any conflicts or competition over prospective clients, businesses, or whatever that might come to the area?
Well, that's a really good question, and it's a really important part of the work that we do with your economic development officers individually and collectively. The Western REN, we actually meet with our whole region's economic development team on a pretty regular basis. We have started laying out what we refer to as a lead handling protocol, and it's really a terribly boring name for what it is. But the idea is to, exactly what you're talking about, to avoid those conflicts. When an opportunity arises or a lead shows up, to be able to know right away, you know, whose wheelhouse is this in? Is it a regional effort? If it comes into the town of Yarmouth, and Natalie and Jeff right away say, "No, the town isn't going to be able to meet this need, because this isn't where we're focusing our effort," then they would punt it over to us, and we would chop it out to the region. If something comes to us, and we're like, "Oh, this is a dead ringer for the town of Yarmouth," then we bring it to Natalie. And a lot of it really is dependent on the relationships. And that is a huge part of economic development, is having the relationships established and the trust built among us.
So my concern, when they set up the REN was, and went with the individual economic development officers in each municipal unit, that you're almost setting up the potential for those kind of, I don't want to use the word conflict, those kinds of competitions. And rather than having, you know, all of the REN people in-house serving the whole area, that's always been a concern of mine since it's set up. I mean, I haven't seen it happen yet.
Yeah.
I'm waiting.
And it hasn't. I think that we've all been really cognizant of the potential for conflict there, and for challenges and competition. And we're just really open with one another about what our strengths are and what we need to focus on. At our level, we've, our focus is on matters that would have a regional impact. So if it's specific to the town of Yarmouth, then it is specifically for your own economic development officer.
Thank you, your worship.
Yeah, so I'm just going to add to that, because it's a really great question. When you put, when you put economic development into the hands of an organization that represents a region, and you take it respectfully, you take it away from councils, who end up fighting for their own, you know, it works. It works because staff, as economic development officers, understand what belongs in their area. And I don't think they, I have never seen one of them, and I've been the chair of the LNO for, since its inception, I've never seen one of them pause in saying, "You know what? This belongs somewhere else."
Yeah.
"It's not our baby," you know. And I always say, you know, a high-rise doesn't belong in a rural area any more than a mink ranch belongs in a town. You just have to know what you do, so it works. It's when you get politicians involved, you know, so it's great to be able to hand it over.
Absolutely. It really is important that we maintain our regional lens, and that is what our focus is.
And it's working.
It's working.
Go ahead there.
Thank you, your worship. Hi Erica, good presentation.
Thank you.
Question I was going to ask you is about the Barrington component. I know when they had the old former Southwest Shore Development Authority, that the Shelburne County felt disengaged, and I think Barrington was one of the biggest proponents of being disengaged. And I'm glad to see that Barrington has seen the REN get up, get working, and they came and joined the other municipal units. So how's the relationship so far with Barrington? And how are they doing? Because every day of the week, you'll talk to, talk to a person tonight from downshore that comes and does their retail business, a lot of the retail business in the town of Yarmouth. So how's the Barrington component making out right now?
In short, fantastic. We've got a really good relationship with their council, with their warden, and with their CAO. So they actually, just recently, Warden Nickerson was giving us all kinds of kudos about making Barrington feel really involved, and informed, and in the loop. An important part of why they chose to join us is because from the beginning, even when they chose not to sign on at the very beginning, we still kept them informed about what we were doing. And we left the door open for them, and we told them regularly, "You know what? Anytime you want to join, we're here, working away."
So I'm going to add a line to that, because you won't say it. But they've spoken to me as chair, and they've said basically the same thing, but Erica keeps them updated every step of the way. And that makes a difference, you know, when you can just reach out back and forth, and you know you're not missing anything. So thank you for that.
Oh, of course.
They're a great partner.
It's my pleasure. They really are.
Counselor Cleveland?
How long has the database been up and running?
The database has been up and publicly running only for a couple months.
Okay.
We applied for and received job creation partnership funding to hire somebody to do the data entry. It's all very manually intensive at the moment. There are efforts underway to build widgets and gadgets and such that'll scoop through the background and find the listings and post them automatically. But we do have somebody in the office right now, but only until mid-February. So it's a part of why I'm doing this push right now, to make sure you all know about it. And again, although you're not the target, I do encourage every one of you to take a look at it, and send us any concerns you have. "Oh, this business closed down. This one's changed names. That one's got the wrong phone number." You see anything like that. I'm not asking you to proofread the thing. We've had Tracy doing this for months already. But please do. Fresh eyes are always helpful, and these kind of data sets are constant efforts to keep up to date and accurate, and so critical that they are.
A couple of months isn't very long
No.
To have any kind of a feel for how this is going to be used, or how much.
That's right.
But at this point, how's it looking? And how does, say I'm an investor, how do I become aware of this, other than just the fact that you're here pushing it now?
Yeah. And that is a part of what we're working at provincial level. The other RENs throughout the province are doing similar data sets. The Cape Breton REN already has one up and running, and in fact, we just used the exact same platform that they had. The South Shore REN is, I think, working on one. I know that the Eastern Strait REN is, and so is the Valley REN. So all of the currently operational RENs are working on doing this as well. The goal is to have 100% Nova Scotia coverage outside of the HRM. And of course, that is, the REN focus is always in the regions outside of the HRM.
Excellent. Thank you. Great job.
Yeah, thanks for everything. Any more questions? We're good. Thank you very much, Erica. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. I'm going to leave my business cards over here on the corner of the desk. And if you see that piece of property that you know is for sale, and all it's advertising it as a sign in the window that says for rent, for sale, and a phone number, take a picture of it and send it to me.
We can do that. Good for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, business arising. Request for Decision Arts and Culture Center Concept Design and Feasibility Study? Go ahead, CAO.
So, your worship, we did a request for proposals for the next phase of the work for the Arts and Culture Facility, which is to dig in and go beyond the conceptual level and get into what the real needs are in the Arts and Culture Community, and do a detailed feasibility in terms of operation and capital costs. So we did a request for proposals. Four proposals were received. They were evaluated by a committee of four, two staff and two members of council. The consensus was that the recommendation we made to council to accept the proposal submitted by McKay, Lion, Sweet Apple Architects for the Arts and Culture Center Concept Design and Feasibility Study Phase for the amount of $136,400 plus HST, and that is for your consideration.
Okay, good. Go ahead, Counselor McLeod.
I'm prepared to make a motion that council accept the proposal, as Jeff has read to us.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. So under the business arising, I don't need to do the A and B. These are just the attachments. Okay, so the request for decision, 8B, Stormwater Charges. CAO?
Your worship, this is on a request for decision form, but it's really more of a request for direction. Council staff have talked... for the arts and culture facility, which is to dig in and go beyond the conceptual level and get into what the real needs are in the arts and culture community and do a detailed feasibility in terms of operation and capital costs. So we did a request for proposals. Four proposals were received. They were evaluated by a committee of four, two staff and two members of council. The consensus was that the recommendation we made to council to accept the proposal submitted by McKay, Lion, Sweet Apple Architects for the Arts and Culture Centre Concept Design and Feasibility Study phase for the amount of $136,400 plus HST. And that is for your consideration.
Okay, good. Go ahead, Counselor McLeod.
I'm prepared to make a motion that council accept the proposal as Jeff has read to us.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. So under the business arising, I don't need to do the A and B. These are just the attachments. Okay. So the request for decision, eight B, stormwater charges. CAO.
Your Worship, this is on a request for decision form, but it's really more of a request for direction. Staff have talked a while, obviously, about the issues we have with stormwater that sometimes show up as floods and sometimes show up as inflows into people's basements and so on. And so we have, as many of you will know, we've done many things over the years and we continue to do things to enhance our stormwater handling capability. The Cliff Street project, as an example, was a stormwater separation project at its core. It was about moving stormwater out of the combined sewer and replacing water lines and ultimately the blacktop on the street. So that's an example of the type of initiative that the town undertakes in order to manage stormwater. We are currently in the process of looking at doing some enhancement to Broadbrook between Southeast Street and the outer limits of town. And we've recently got cooperation from property owners to enter their property and do that work. So that's good news. And that work will proceed, the design piece of that at least initially. What we're asking for here is your consideration of another tool to help us in managing stormwater. And that is applying a stormwater charge. So we charge people for drinking water. We charge people for the disposal of drinking water through sanitary sewer system. But basically, people get a free ride in terms of the stormwater that sheds off of their property. There is no direct charge to a property owner. So if you pave your entire large commercial property, you aren't charged anything additional for that in terms of rates from the town. However, you place an additional burden on the stormwater system that then costs all taxpayers when we have to do the kinds of enhancements that we just talked about. I know HRM, through its water utility, has responsibility for sewer as well. And they have implemented over the last few years a stormwater charge system. And I think they've tweaked it a bit since they first introduced it.
Who's done that?
Halifax.
HRM? Okay, yeah.
So what staff are asking is whether you would like us to do a bit of a study on that, to see who else besides HRM or Halifax is implementing stormwater charges? What are the models they're using and how it's working? What are the issues they've come across and how have they resolved them? And ultimately, report back to you on whether or not we would recommend a stormwater charge and if so, what the model would look like, including some financial analysis on how that would impact commercial properties, sample commercial properties, sample residential properties, and ultimately bring it back for your consideration for implementation.
Good. Thank you. Deputy?
There'd be new developments, Jeff. All developments, existing developments. I know because I went to, I think, one of the sustainability conferences. And I think that was the amount of water generated coming off a 500 or 600 car parking lot is what it costs the municipality to truck it out, take care of it, and get it out of the system is a lot of money, right? And the wear and tear on your system. So I was just wondering how it would work. The one in Halifax, they were actually charging people with open ditches, I think, at one time. So if a ditch went in front of your house, you took your water off your house and went into the ditch. There was a charge there at one time. I don't know if that's still in place, but you'd be checking right across the, probably right across the country. I think you could go FCM, sustainability way, whatever.
Deputy, previous deputy.
They have a ditch tech, yeah.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't jump out and start answering questions at this point because we really have done no investigation yet. Before we started dipping our toe into that study, so let's see if council's interested before we spend our time and resources on it. But that's the kind of question we would get the answer to, is how do you implement a new fee like this? Is it all properties pay beginning day one? Or do you phase it in? Those are questions that we would answer through the work.
Good. Keep it on. Go ahead.
I think if you're going to do that, the first thing you want to do would be to troll all the newspaper stories arising after Halifax implemented that program. There's a bunch of them. Because that would give you some guidance on where the problem areas are. I mean, they've had some significant problems because it was new. And you'd learn a lot from that, I think. I frankly think we should look at it.
I agree. So did somebody make the motion?
No.
Okay. Do you want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation that they do in-house work to provide us with more information on this and probably not with recommendations so much as information and maybe recommendations as to next steps if we decided we were going to go another step.
Good.
That's my motion, Your Worship.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor McLeod. Did you want to, go ahead.
No.
You're on.
Okay. I seconded, Your Worship. And I read it earlier a couple of times, and I think it's the appropriate thing to do. It's all part of planning and looking ahead. So I'm going to obviously support the motion.
Thank you. Questions been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Stephanie and Eddie Eldridge, 206 Herbert Street. CAO.
Your Worship, we have correspondence, but I would suggest that it may not be appropriate to take any action on it at this time. And the reason being is that the Eldridge's have appealed the decision to the Utility and Review Board with regard to the food bank property, 206 Herbert Street. And so if council were inclined to consider any action as a result of her correspondence, it may be a moot point if the Utility and Review Board were to find that the decision of council were to be overturned.
Go ahead, Counselor McLeod.
So I support what Jeff has said. Is there a proper procedure to just a motion to not deal with it sort of thing at this point?
We'll just place it on file for now.
Just receiving, place it on file. So moved.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion for that? Okay. Thank you. Moved and seconded. Questions been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay. New business? So our Josh Cochran has been receiving some lovely awards, humanitarian awards. And so I just thought it may be appropriate to send a letter out to him or a certificate for the Human Rights Award. So I'm just looking for a motion if everybody agrees to do that or just, I have to say that he's the coolest kid. And I think he does, he does as much as sometimes as 10 adults. Like, he's everywhere. He's raising money for cancer patients and doing, you know, all this humanitarian work at such a young age. And it sets a great example. It's really great to see. So I think we need to celebrate Josh, and I think it's a good thing.
It would absolutely be my honor to make that motion.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Cleveland? Seconded by Counselor Dennis. As he certainly could.
Want to do the award yet? Get a copy next?
Yeah, he can do the O Canada. Okay. Call for the question?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. So the 100 meals, and it's just on there to, for us to consider if we want to sponsor one of the meals. The mayor's task force is doing it. I'll tell you this, that I'm just waiting for one more email to fill in two dates. I can't believe it, in a week and a half, it just happened. So we will have one meal a day for the community. And when I say community, I mean, it's not just people that need a meal. It's for everybody to come and attend because that's how you create community. And we want everybody to be comfortable. So we've had service organizations step up. We've had people call and say, you know, they will serve, they will cook, they will clean. We've had, oh my goodness, we have quite a stack of sponsorships from different businesses and individuals sponsoring meals or parts of. It's $500 to sponsor a meal, but we've had, you know, everything from $10 donations to many of the $500 donations. So we're still looking for donations. But I just thought it might be appropriate that the town would sponsor one of those meals. And then I have a second one that I didn't put in here.
Your Worship will make a motion to town Yarmouth sponsor a meal at $500 for the 100 Meals Initiative.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Let's see, maybe when's the first one, Your Worship?
Okay. So it starts on Sunday evening, the 17th, and it will be every day for 100 days then. So Beacon Church is doing from 4 till 6 o'clock on Sunday, and it'll be a full supper. So you just head out to Beacon Church. And then we have, the Hope Center actually stepped up with Mondays and Fridays because they're so excited about their new building and they want to get out there and do some things for the community. So on Mondays and Fridays, there will be two sittings at 11:30 and 12:30 because their space is a little bit smaller. And you can head out there. Tuesdays are the Knights of Columbus. They always put on the soup kitchen every Tuesday for, I think, what is it, 11 till 1? And Wednesday mornings, I may as well say it all, Wednesday mornings are basically the, Holy Trinity Anglican Church does a breakfast from 8:00 till 8:30 till 10:00. So folks can head out there. It's families, it's kids, it's anybody that just wants to go and sit and have a meal. Thursdays are being divided between Temple Baptist and the Wesleyan Church. So every second week, Fridays are taken care of. And Saturdays, actually, we have access to the Knights of Columbus to do a breakfast from 9 till 10:00. And I just, I'll just say who it was. It was, I'm seeing her, Sandra Spinney and Barry McGregor called and said, can we set up teams for every Saturday morning? I couldn't say yes fast enough. So, you know, cook, clean, purchase the groceries, all those things. And Sundays are just about taken care of, except we need one Sunday at night when I thought, how cool would it be if council did chili with, chili with the council for a Sunday evening or a lunch? Anybody in?
We're waiting.
Okay. All right. And this is all, I want to say, it's all free.
Have you ever tasted my chili?
We would.
Fire it, do the red?
I make a mean chili, too. That's awesome. It's all free. I would always say that, you know what, there will be a donation box at each place just to offset some of the cost, but nobody has to put any money into that because we don't want anybody to not go because they're uncomfortable. So we're pretty pumped. So you're on, Counselor Cleveland?
Oh, well, my question actually to you is, is there somewhere for the general public to get that schedule?
Yes. So I'm just waiting for a call tomorrow morning, my fingers crossed that we're going to access. I just have three more dates to fill in. And when that's done, it'll be on our website. It'll be on, there's a Facebook page, 100 Meals. It'll be, you know, going to ask CGLS to announce it weekly or even daily in the community bulletin board, just each day what's, you know, what's coming up next. Oh my goodness, I know the Vanguard, thank you, Carla, she's going to do a story if you haven't already, but she's doing a story as well. And then I'm thinking we're going to see if maybe the Vanguard and CGLS would, on a regular basis, just keep updating, you know. I'll just give you a week or two of meals and put them in, and we're good to go. So, yeah. Who's next? Go ahead, Counselor McLeod.
Wade asked my question.
Yeah. So it's great. And if anybody, if anybody wants to donate, because we're going to need donations for 100 meals, you know, all of the food isn't taken care of. I mean, that's everything from napkins to, you know, meat and bread and juice and everything in between. So if anybody wants donations, you can just come to Town Hall, make the donation, and here's the good part, you can get a tax receipt because we're a charity. We're a charity. So December, people are looking for, you know, places to donate money for charitable reasons. So we will write you a tax receipt. And then I will say this because I checked with our auditors. If you're going through one of the grocery store lineups, and you know how they have the, what are they, the gift cards? You can get a gift card and we can give you a receipt for that. I know, I didn't know we could do that, but they said we could. So, you know, it's just easy to grab a $20 or $50 gift card and bring it in and give it to us and make sure it's activated. Can't just pick it up and not activate it, but you know. Anyway, so, yeah. Okay. Did we vote on that? Linda? No? Okay. Questions been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And then I'll just ask if anybody from council that can show up or staff, you know, on the Sunday night that we're going to pick. Or it could be a Sunday lunch, it doesn't matter, but, you know, chili, so, good. You make chili, CAO?
Made chili last night.
Wow, there we go. Okay. All right. So the hub strategy, 9C. I hope everybody had a chance to look at this. So we have, I want to say most of us, but maybe, I can't remember if Don Mills did it for the last council or before the last election. I'm not sure. But basically...
We did one of the SN flash.
Okay, so you were there. That's exactly, that's what I was asking. Yeah. He's a, yeah, he's a smart cookie. So what Don has done, basically, is he's asking for support from, I want to call them the, you know, the hub, the economic hubs in Nova Scotia. There are nine of them. I think, I think they're in there. And it's basically the nine largest towns, and that includes Halifax and Sydney. It also includes Yarmouth, Ridgewater, Kenville, Anna Ganish, Naamur, St. Turo. Yeah. And I think Port Hawkesbury asked him to be part of it. Well, I think Port Hawkesbury may have shown up pretty excited. Yeah. There was only eight. Yeah. So we had a couple meetings a couple years ago, the mayors of the hubs, and we discussed it. And basically, the importance of, the importance of, Jeff would say this, the densification piece. So that you need to strengthen the cores in order to make the rest strong. It's really, it's quite simple, but you have to wrap your head around it as well. So I remember a couple years ago, the Chronicle Herald called and asked if I would do an op-ed piece on the importance of a strong downtown Halifax to the rest of the province. And I said, I'll write that. I said, but I don't know if the people in Yarmouth will say, what are you doing saying how important it is for Halifax to be strong? But the fact is that when the world is looking, if the capital city is not strong, then they're not looking as hard. I see Natalie, our economic development, she's shaking her head jets. So by the same information and the same strategy that the economic hubs of the province are strong, it strengthens the rest of the province as well. So basically, what he's doing is he's asking us in principle if we would support this so that we can meet in January, the eight, he's asked the eight, nine now, the nine mayors to just come together, go to your councils, get this okayed in principle to go to the next steps to see where we can go. Go ahead there, Counselor.
So, Your Worship, when you look at his work, most of the hubs that he's identified are defined by 50-kilometer radiuses. Both Sydney and Yarmouth are larger radiuses because in the case of Yarmouth, when you look at it, really, they're taking, taking you around Shelburne. That's why we're trying to build the YAR, as part of the stuff. There's nine hubs, not just Halifax, and we're one of them. And that's why we have a vision, all seven of us get committed to these kinds of things that'll strengthen and reinforce the downtown so that people within our region here look to us first before they take their trips into Halifax. The same with our own citizens. Proud of their downtown. We're their semi-capital. Halifax is the capital of our province. We're the capital of Western Nova Scotia. And we should be proud of it, and everyone in the area should be proud to call us such. And that's the challenge we face. And we can't face it if we aren't able to call, to come together here in our local community and do things like the YAR and other things that we need here to make that. That's all I have to say tonight, Your Worship. Quite passionate about this.
Motion to support?
So I make a motion that we support this initiative of Don Mills and Corporate Research Association. Associates in four.
Thank you. Second, thank you. Any further discussion? Questions, anything, anyone? Okay. Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Budget process. Ooh.
So, Your Worship, the budget season is upon us. And so Director of Finance, I asked him to propose a process, including dates. You may recall last year when we got into the budget process, we did have some difficulty on short notice getting dates from council to participate in some of the discussions. And so in order to sort of preempt that, what we're trying to do with this is give you a set of dates that you can put in your calendars and that we can, we can plan to meet. Now, all of the dates that are identified are Thursdays. Some of them are council Thursdays and some of them are community of the whole Thursdays. Others are in-between Thursdays when we get into reviewing, reviewing the numbers, particularly on the operating side. And so the second page of this includes two columns of schedules, one for the town of water utility operating budgets and the other for the capital budget. So I would ask that you take, if you're in agreement with this, that you would take these dates and enter them into your calendar and try and hold them. What we would like to do is proceed with the budget on this schedule. This would allow us, would allow you, the first opportunity to consider approving the operating budget on April twelfth at the regular council meeting, which would be an early date for us. Typically, we approve in May.
I was gonna say, if we get that done, good on us.
Well, we usually approve in May. But we think if we get on this, that we may be able to give you, you know, get through the work and have a budget for April. But we do have a May date scheduled as well, just in case.
So, okay.
On the capital side, we have a, an opportunity to perhaps approve it at the February council meeting. That might be ambitious. But we're, we're putting that out there as a possibility. If that doesn't happen, we're hoping that the March meeting will approve the capital budget. And of course, the reason we want to get capital done first is because the things that are approved there, the procurement for capital, equipment and projects, takes a bit of time, design time, specification time. And we don't want to lose the construction season for, you know, haggling over the budget. And so our first priority with council will be getting the capital budget closed, and then we'll look to close the operating budget. If there are any questions, Your Worship, be happy to answer.
I have a couple. Um, so it's saying, so for example, on the, on the operational side, finance to send out department budget forms. So when are we meeting? Sorry. Yeah, I missed, I'm, I'm... Oh, I'm sorry. How did I?
I shut, I shut myself off, sorry.
Oh, and I put Jim on first.
So if you follow down through the process, so on the operating budget, so the budget dates were, are given to the directors and managers today. And we said pending council approval. Uh, finance will send out, um, department budget forms, January the eleventh. So they will receive forms that we want them to resubmit to us. Uh, department entity a month later submits to finance. Uh, the all-in budget is prepared by March first, by the CAO and the Director of Finance. And then we begin a round of meetings with senior staff to, so that we understand what it is they have in the budget. So when we come forward to council, hopefully, we can answer your questions. Uh, the draft budget to committee of the whole shows up on the twenty-second of March. And then we've got scheduled for review the twenty-ninth and April fifth.
Gotcha.
Then we hit the April council meeting. Now, the budget doesn't have to be on that agenda if we're not ready, but it is the first opportunity to potentially approve it. Then we've scheduled one more Thursday, the regular cow, or sorry, committee of the whole meeting on the twenty-sixth of April. And if we're ready, March tenth would be the next opportunity to approve it. So your meetings start on the twenty-second of, of March, related to the budget. On the capital side, switching over to the other column, again, the request notices sent to directors and managers today. January the eleventh, all director, manager, all directors and managers' capital requests are to be into finance. So any department or agency that will be looking for capital funding from the town, we're asking they have their request in by January the eleventh. We'll review with managers and directors, that is, myself and the Director of Finance, on or about the twenty-fifth. Uh, on February first, we're hoping to meet with committee of the whole and review the first draft of the cap, of the capital budget at that time. Only a week later, I mean, that's pretty ambitious, but if we, if we had a really great round to that point, there is a possibility the budget could be approved. We don't think that's likely, but it is a possibility. Twenty-second of February, we're asking you to hold as well as March first, in case there's quite a bit of work to do on the capital budget. And then your next opportunity would be March the eighth at the regular council meeting to approve the capital budget. So, uh, again, if we can hold those dates, and I understand that, Your Worship, at each one of these dates, there may be somebody missing. And if we're okay to try and, try and hold these dates and okay to proceed with the process without necessarily a hundred percent in attendance at any one particular meeting, uh, I think we can get through this and maybe get the, the capital budget done in March and the operating in April.
Okay. So what time are these meetings?
Okay, so, um, that we can be very flexible on. Uh, the regular committee of the whole is a three-thirty meeting. Um, regular council, of course, is seven-thirty. The meetings in between, we can be flexible with staff. This is, this is work we're doing in support of your work, which is approving the budget. So you tell us what time the meetings are and we'll plan for that.
Okay. Yep, sorry. Go ahead there.
Linda, you're gonna send out notices at the appropriate time for all these meetings. Yeah. Thank you very much. I'm more available than I used to be in the last hundred years, so.
Right? He's getting younger every day. Okay, so Linda's gonna send out...
If you, I appreciate a motion to accept the plan so that we can...
Yeah, we can, okay, so let's do that. Let's accept the plan, okay? Deputy?
Second.
And seconded, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. And I think the easiest thing for us, in all honesty, is that Linda send, send out the dates that we need to be.
For sure.
Available, right?
So...
This just gets, I had everything in my box.
So, Your Worship, you asked about the time of the meetings, and we regularly have the committee of the whole at three-thirty to try and maximize attendance, and I think that's been working pretty well.
It has.
So is that what you would like us to do with those special meetings that we have in the schedule?
Yeah, that works.
Okay. So that's...
It's with Wade, it's Wade and Don. You're good? Well, we're looking at three-thirty for you. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we'll send the notices out for three-thirty on those dates and...
And then the council meeting days, do we come early? I guess we can talk about it. You know, if it's gonna be a couple hours, maybe we just come early and have something to eat and, and continue on. It might, may be easier to do a couple hours.
So we'll, okay, why don't we hold five o'clock on those dates, just in case?
Okay.
In case we have, if it's opportune to have a working session before the council meeting. Uh, if you're okay to hold those, Linda will send out the notices and we'll, we'll plan for that as well.
Good. Okay, guys? Everybody good? Did we make the motion? Did we, did we, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? We already did that, didn't we? Sends us the budget, we're making double sure. Thank you for that. Okay? Communities in Bloom, Councilor Dennis?
Um, in view of my ongoing health issues, I feel it's best to step down as Chair of the Communities in Bloom, but I'd like to remain on the committee. Um, having been part of the committee since its inception, I've seen the benefits and the exposure that has brought, that has brought to the, to our town. And I'd like to see the good work continue into the coming years. So with this, I'd like to make a motion that Councilor Cleveland be requested to take over as Chair of the Communities in Bloom Committee.
Okay, so the first question is, are you willing to accept that, Counselor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So there's the motion?
Second motion.
Second by Counselor Hood. Any discussion?
Questions?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Sandy, thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
And I know you'll be there too because, and it's in good hands. Thank you, Counselor. Better be in good hands, Wade. It's in good hands.
Your Worship, committee of the whole?
Yes, sir.
Your Worship, I move that council support a three-day Roaring Twenties Antique Auto Show for 2018, and this, and this be referred to the Traffic Authority regarding street closures.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried.
Uh, Your Worship, I move that staff be directed to issue a request for proposals to engage a firm to develop a governance model for the new arts and culture center. And if I could speak to that, if there's a second there?
Second.
Uh, to the CAO, Jeff, with this request for proposal, we'll be able to use this for other entities, I take it, that's, that the town's involved in? I was thinking maybe when we maybe were working with the Port divestiture and some other things, that we could use these same, same governance rules in, in something like that?
Go ahead, CAO.
So, Your Worship, what the anticipated outcomes would be governance best practices, so set, set of bylaws by which it would offer, the organization would operate. And absolutely, those should be based on best practices. And for the most part, should be transferable to any corporate entity that we have, maybe even including can, council on some aspects of it. The part that won't be as easily transferable would be things like articles of incorporation that speak to the mandate of the organization. But, you know, that, that is sort of organization-specific. But most of it should be transferable.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, Deputy. Okay, questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. That's my mistake.
So does that include a recommendation for board composition?
It would include a recommendation for board composition, process for identifying...
Good, thanks.
Yep, pointing, so on, yep.
No, it's just, no, you're on.
Oh.
It's always on. It's just when you, when they press the button, it doesn't go back to you, that's all.
Oh, that's not the worst thing I've ever had. Uh, Your Worship, I move that staff be directed to hold a tech, second tax sale. And if somebody seconds a motion, I can ask the CAO a question.
Excuse me.
Uh, to the CAO, Jeff, with this one, can you tell us the process and what happened with the setting of a price like the, maybe the Wilson's building on, or the old Wagner's restaurant on Main Street?
Go ahead, CAO.
So we adopted a policy a couple years ago that, that enables council to, to direct a second tax sale within a, within a fiscal year. Our tax sale a couple weeks ago, not all the properties sold, there were three properties that didn't sell. And so we're able to offer those for sale again, another tax sale this year, and I believe without notice, without the same notice periods that are required when you, when you first go to tax sales. So with the direction from council, if this, if this goes through, we'll look at a tax sale this winter. And council does have the ability, and you mentioned the Wilson's property, council has the ability to set a minimum price that they'd be willing to accept at tax sale. Uh, for the properties that would be coming up this winter, at this point, there has not been a minimum price set, and there wasn't previously. But that is something that is on our agenda to discuss in camera tonight. That is, that is something council can do in camera. So expect that conversation later if this, if this motion passes.
Yeah, and the other thing is those, once we do this process, not like the other ones, these properties aren't redeemable once, once this is done.
I, I, I didn't check, but they, they, they were redeemable two weeks ago.
I'm, okay, so if we set the price and we, if we pass this, go through the thing, and once they're sold at the tax sale, they won't, once they're sold, they're sold?
No. They're, they're still redeemable.
Okay.
So...
But for the total price?
So...
Yes.
So if the, so the guy that, so the guy that owned, say he owed ten thousand dollars on a piece of property, we had a minimum of five, somebody can't, got it for six, the guy can't come and offer sixty-five hundred, he has to pay the full redeemable price on the property?
That's right.
Plus expenses? Whatever they are? Okay.
So, so I'm gonna ask you another question, because I want you to explain, I already know the answer. But, but the Wilson Building, we were able to just give them the deed, and there's a reason for that.
Yes, so, under the Municipal Government Act, if a property is more than six years in arrears on taxes, then it's, the redemption period, the six-month redemption period no longer applies. I believe I have that right, Craig?
Yes.
So, so in that case, this was, that property was more than six years, it had been offered at tax sale several times in the past with no, no bidders. And so, you know, we made it known that, that it was immediately...
Transferable.
Transferable, and we were able to sell it above our minimum asking price.
Good, thank you.
Good. Thanks, CAO. Go ahead there, Deputy.
Uh, did we vote on, I don't know if we voted on that, did we vote on that?
So we're on the tech, second back sale?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried.
Your Worship, I make a motion that staff be directed to investigate alternatives to adjust the transit route to accommodate eight-thirty Ellis Road.
Second.
Question?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried.
Thank you, Your Worship.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, recommendation from Pension Committee. Go ahead there, CAO.
So, Your Worship, there should be a paper on your, on your desk. The Pension Committee met on December sixth with our actuaries, and we, we reviewed our, our work, I guess, what we need to do. And one of the things is to get the Pension Committee reappointed by council. And so the slate that you see there, Jim McLeod as Vice Chair, David Winship as the, representing the Fire Department, Trevor Clermont from Public Works, Jerry Varon from Town Hall, and Jody Kinney as a representative at large.
I'm the chair.
I am the chair, so I'm, I'm automatically appointed to the committee.
Oh, all right.
So it's recommended, it was recommended by the committee that these members be, be reappointed by council.
Good. Have that motion?
So will.
Thank you, Deputy. Seconded by Counselor Barry. Any discussion, questions?
What?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? You certainly can. Uh, motion carried.
So, Your Worship, just to follow up, there are a couple of other items of business that the Pension Committee dealt with. Uh, we did receive our tri-annual actuarial report, and the Pension Fund is in good shape. Uh, we are no longer required to fund our pension on a, on a solvency basis, meaning that it could be wound up today, that there's enough money there today to pay all of the, all of the liabilities. The assumption with the government pensions now is that they will continue in, into the future, on an ongoing basis, and so we fund on a, on a going concern basis. The solvency of our plan is below eighty-five percent, which means that we'll do another actuarial, actuarial valuation next year, and hopefully, our solvency is in better, better condition and will be free from that, from that annual requirement. Uh, we do have an investment policy, and the investment policy's done, done quite well for us, and we reviewed that as a committee. Uh, our consultant, however, is going to bring forward some, some housekeeping amendments to our, to our investment policy, and that policy comes back to council for approval.
Okay.
So expect that in the next few months. And finally, municipalities have had the opportunity to invest their pension plans with the public sec, public sector superannuation plan. Uh, that's an opportunity we've had for a couple of years, but frankly, haven't really understood. So our pension consultants understood the ramifications. So our pension consultants have recently worked with Cape Breton Regional Municipality, and they have basically transferred their pension assets and bought into that provincial program. They've offered to do a study with our town to look at the possibility, feasibility of doing the same for us. So, at this point, we've asked the actuaries to give us a proposal on what the likely cost of doing that work would be, and the Pension Committee will meet and review that proposal and make a recommendation to council in the future. So, those couple bits of business will be forthcoming in the next few months. We use Ecklerin Partners out of Halifax.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
Just a comment, really. It was my first time sitting with the group, and it was a good, long, interesting, challenging, fun meeting, I believe. So, thanks very much, Jeff.
Communities in Bloom Recommendation. Councilor Cleveland. Chair!
Yep, been chair for all three minutes, and here we go. Thank you, your worship. As you know, Communities in Bloom Yarmouth, every year, or most years at least, enters the Communities in Bloom National Competition in a category. It's a really effective way for us to gauge our growth when it comes to beautifying the town, making it more green. And in the short time that I've been part of Communities in Bloom, I've really seen how it becomes another piece of the puzzle in drawing new people and ultimately, new business and new growth to the area. It's just one of those small pieces that helps in that. So, you may remember in this past year, last year, and this year, we entered in the Canada 150 category, and we received a bronze five-leaf commendation, and actually got a special mention for the amount of downtown development and improvement in that particular area. So, at our last meeting, we decided that in 2018, we'd like to compete in the category Circle of Excellence with Communities in Bloom. And as CIB Yarmouth is an advisory committee, we thought we'd bring it before council before we move forward. So, it's a request for us to do so, and enter ourselves in that category, Circle of Excellence.
Okay, so there's your motion, seconded by deputy. Any discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Thank you. One other thing I want to mention, I want to remind council that Yarmouth is hosting Communities in Bloom Symposium in 2019. And part of our duty is at the next one in 2017, Strathcona County in Alberta in September. We have to be there. We have to host a dinner there. And it'd be pretty amazing if we could actually accept an award there. And perhaps the mayor could be there as well to accept that award and invite everybody to Yarmouth from Strathcona County. We're going to be there. I'm planning on being there. And I think it would be really good to have you there as well. We do, and the entertainment.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Oh, my dear. So, we've got some reports for information. I don't have a mayor's report, but if I had one, I would probably just say, I hope the community keeps in mind that when decisions are made, they're council decisions. For some reason, folks think I make all the decisions, and I don't. So, thank you. So, thank you for your help in making decisions, but it's, you know, we have discussions sometimes at different tables about, you know, should the schools do a little bit more to help educate, you know, the kids and on, you know, municipal politics, or on any level, and who looks after what, you know? So, you know, it's difficult. But anyway, I want to thank the six of you for helping me make decisions. Sorry.
And staff.
And staff. No, as a matter of fact, our CAO, no, he doesn't. He just provides us with the best information to make the decisions. So, additions, okay. So, additions, 12A, intermunicipal expectations concerning lobbying versus advising. CAO?
Okay, so, we have advisory committees, the town does, and I think of Planning and Heritage, and their specific mandate is to provide advice. And council's role is to make decisions, and to consider that advice, not always agree, but to receive it, consider it, and make decisions. We have a number of agencies, boards, that provide services for the town, and often in conjunction with our municipal partners, whose job is not necessarily to advise, but simply to provide service. So, I think about the Waste Park, Waste Check, YASTA, Mariner Center, so on. They do provide us advice from time to time on matters that come before you, that are yours to think about. But their advisory is their first mandate. Their first mandate is to provide service. Sometimes, those organizations are actually involved in more advocacy or lobbying activity, rather than simply providing advice. The question, I guess, is what is our expectation in that regard? Right? When they're part of our family of organizations that we own, create, fund, there's probably a different expectation than if you're really talking about a standalone organization, such as maybe the YMCA, right, where they are, they're at arm's length. They might lobby or advocate, but when they're not at arm's length, advice is a more appropriate, at least through my lens, advice is a more appropriate interaction with council. I don't know if you share that view or not. I've had some concerns expressed to me that some members of our family are seemingly at more arm's length than they actually are. I don't know if everyone shares that opinion, but if you do, we have to consider also that there are other partners in these organizations, and they may or may not share that point of view. They may feel that it's perfectly fine for a part of our family to be behaving in a way that's quite independent. I think it's important, because I've heard from some counselors that there are some concerns and maybe some different perspectives on that. And I think it's important that council talk about it and make a decision for yourselves on whether or not you're comfortable with the roles, I guess, of those agencies, and to talk to your partners and be sure that they're comfortable. It's something that if you are concerned about it, we can put it on our next intermunicipal agenda. We could write to our partners and say, "Look, we want to talk about this, so that we're all on the same page." And as I've said to her worship on this topic in the past, just because I have a perception of the way things ought to be, doesn't mean I'm right. And it isn't always my way. So, we are in some relationships with other organizations, partnering with Argyle and the district select. I'm suggesting we have that conversation with the political leadership and the administration at our next meeting. And if there is a consensus on what the expectations are concerning advice and lobbying or advocacy, I suggest that we communicate that effectively to all of our family, so that the expectations are clear.
Thank you, CAO. So, comments, folks? Let's have a discussion. Go ahead, Councilor Hood.
I run a business, and if one of my employees started to lobby something that was contrary to the objectives of my business, I'd fire them. I wouldn't fire them immediately. I'd pull them on the carpet, depending on how grievous the situation was. We're an employer. We appoint members of boards. Frankly, I think board members that we appoint should reflect the objectives of the town council. If they don't, they should be removed. That's all I'm gonna say.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilor.
Your worship, I support Jeff's introduction to the matter and look forward to a discussion.
Go ahead.
Actually, I feel the same way. Not quite so harsh as Counselor Hood's approach of it, and there is a very fine line there. But when it comes to any kind of interaction, we all need to, I don't, I hesitate saying, show a united front when it comes to this, because it's okay to disagree. But when, it's time to do it on more of a face-to-face basis, as opposed to a wider advocating basis. And I think that's a discussion that we need to have.
Go ahead, Councilor Barry.
I think developing policies and stuff that's related to this kind of issues is a must right away. And I think the quicker we get to that, we can then push it out to our people that are on these committees and stuff, and they know the objective is something that is urgent to the council and to, urgent to our partnership to make us work in cohesive group. So, I would be saying, yes, I agree with Jeff, that we need to get something in place right away.
Thank you, Councilor. Do you want to say anything?
I'm in total agreement with what Jeff had to say. And I think we do need a policy to help us with that.
Thank you. Okay, so, I obviously agree.
I agree.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to be clear, I didn't disagree with what Jeff had to say.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I put my tone on what he had to say, that's all.
No, but here's the thing. Your tone is my tone. And I have grave, I have concerns, deep concerns, that, and I agree with Wade. We all have to agree, but, you know, it's sort of like council. When we make a decision, it's council's decision. And whether you like it or not, you go out there and you, you know. So, for me, even if I agree with the six of you, I'm gonna get blamed anyway. You know, it's council's decision, and we respect that. And, you know, as Counselor Hood said, we are employers, and you're right. If we owned the town of Yarmouth as a company, we would have taken measures a long time ago. I believe we would. If an individual owned a company, we would have, so, yeah. So, I think, CAO, what we've heard around the table this evening is we need to speak with our municipal partners, and we really need to develop a very clear policy with clear expectations, so that, you know, I often say, you can't, don't write me a speeding ticket if you didn't post the sign. So, you know, let's develop the rules, and we stick to them. And again, you know, what Councilor Cleveland said is really important. We don't have to agree, but there's a way to do things, and there's a way not to do things. So, does that help you? So, let's have a motion. You're good? We're looking for a motion to direct staff to, do we want to write a letter to our municipal?
Let's have it over next.
Okay? Okay? To add, to add intermunicipal expectations on our next joint council meeting agenda. And I would suggest with the idea of forming a policy. Is that helpful? Okay, so who wants to make that motion? Okay, go, Councilor Barry, and you want to second that? Okay, good. Questions? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, folks. Smart City.
Your worship, my name is by that, but I'm gonna ask Caroline to speak to it, if she's willing.
This is still on?
Yep.
Hello?
Hi, she's on. Thanks, Caroline.
No problem. So, the federal government recently announced what I think is a really exciting program. It's a Canada-wide challenge to all communities, regardless of size and borders. So, how you define a community is entirely up to the applicant. And the intent of the challenge is for communities to kind of lead the way in implementing what they're calling data-connected technology and innovative ideas, which better an area. So, they're using that in the sense that it's very broad. They're looking for any kind of innovative solution to a challenge that your community may be having. Applications can be multi-sectored and include ideas from research, private sector, and government. So, there's three prize opportunities which the town of Yarmouth would be eligible to compete in. There's a $50 million prize to all communities regardless of size. I believe there's two $10 million prizes to communities with populations under 500,000. And then there's a $5 million prize to communities with population under 30,000. Applications should include a challenge statement which support the following ideas. So, the idea is that the improvement or the application, the idea, would make our community feel more safe and secure. It would help residents earn a good living. It would aid for moving around the community, create a healthier environment, empower residents or our society, and create, enable more active and healthy lifestyles. Project proposals should be transferable to other communities. So, the idea is you would try out something in your community that could work for issues in other areas. The first preliminary applications, and they really don't have to be well thought out. It would just be a problem and a written challenge statement. They're due for April 24th, 2018. It would not include a full business case. There's actually funding, once you get into the running, they'll give funding to create that business case. So, it's just a proposal, and the project details can develop later on. But I think what I really want to emphasize, and the most important part of this challenge, is that it's supposed to come from public and community engagement. So, project ideas must stem from community engagement and should be meaningful, ambitious, and obtainable. And there is a real opportunity here, I think, to create some positive buzz in our community and excitement, perhaps using our new public participation software that we have purchased, and create a full public engagement campaign, both online and offline, to generate ideas for this application. So, right now, it's proposed that, should council wish to move forward with submitting an application, that staff create a public participation plan for this, for the application process, to generate ideas from the public and get people talking and excited about our community and what we could do. The idea would be that if council wished to proceed, that we would do this. We would come back with some ideas for council early January, and then we would get ways of engaging the public, and then we would get it out there to the public to start generating those ideas. And then maybe at the end of January, early February, we would reduce the ideas and perhaps allow the community to vote on them. So, that's the idea, and it's really exciting. It would require, I believe, commitment from lots of different staff within the town to be involved. And we're just recommending that we start brainstorming and that we take advantage of this opportunity to get the community involved and excited.
Good stuff. So, the recommendation is that council approve the development of a full public engagement program in order to create an application for the Smart City Challenge?
I'll make that a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, Caroline. And Natalie, because you brought that up the other night. That's pretty neat. She got it on our list. Okay, joint council meetings. So, I think we had a request here. Yes.
There's something from our...
Got that, because I've got it right here. Go ahead, CAO.
So, your worship, we've been meeting as joint councils for, I'm gonna guess, around three years now. You know, on a quarterly basis, three councils sit down, and we talk about matters of common interest, really information sharing for the most part. But as we've discussed here just a few minutes ago, there are, sometimes it's an opportune time to deal with some business. We've moved the meetings around. We've held a few of them in this room. We've met in Argyle. And I don't know if we've been in the district building yet, but in any case, it does move around. But what we haven't done is we haven't landed the responsibility for the administrative support.
Sending out notices and that kind of stuff.
That kind of stuff, right?
Keeping in...
So, Chris Frotten, the municipal clerk with Argyle, has written to the other two units. So Chris Frotten, the municipal clerk with Argyle, has written to the other two units with the support of his council, offering to provide that administrative logistical support to that committee or that joint council meeting. So the municipality of Yarmouth has accepted, and I'm recommending that we accept that kind of offer as well.
Okay, so the motion is to accept municipality of the District of Argyle's invitation to coordinate meetings?
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, good. Counselor Dennis and Counselor Barry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Thank you, folks, water write-offs. CAO?
Okay, your worship, we annually go through a little bit of a cleanup, a review of our accounts, and try and deal with, I guess, some old straggler accounts that are still sitting on our books, but we need council's approval to do write-offs. And so Jerry was quite pleased, our director of finance was quite pleased earlier today when he presented me with this rather short list and a rather insignificant funnel dollar amount. In the past, if any of you will recall, we've written off significantly higher amounts because we used to have business occupancy from back in the day when that was collected that wasn't collected, and all of that has been taken care of. So these are some smaller accounts, the largest is $732, the smallest is $2.23, but as long as we carry $2.23, then we still have, you know, this is still an account. And so we'd like to clean these up with your approval, and so what would be required be a motion to write these off. And to be clear, these have all already been allowed for in our financial statements as uncollectible, they're not sitting there as receivable, they're just simply in our system as data that kind of muddle things up.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried.
Thank you, worship.
Thank you. I think we're at the end of that, okay? So additions, approval of invoices, please.
So move.
Thank you, deputy. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. The date of next meeting is January 11th, so we just want to say Merry Christmas, happy holidays to everyone. We will be closed from Christmas Eve, well, actually, that's a
Twenty-second.
Yeah, from the 22nd until just after the New Year. January 2nd. So Merry Christmas, everyone. Yes. Thanks, folks. So we're looking for a motion to go in camera? Thank you, chief, we're good.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Joe.